Close, please.
No, go ahead. I didn't.
Mr. Rick. I move that the Roanoke County School Board come out of closed session for the following to discuss ongoing personnel matters and investigation pursuant to the personnel exemption at 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia and to discuss the investigation of a student matter pursuant to the Scholastic Record exemption at 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia and for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia. And also move to certify that to the best each member's knowledge, only business matters lawfully exempt from open meetings requirements under this chapter, only such public business matters as were justified or identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, was heard, discussed, and considered in the meeting by the school board.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lyndon.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnny.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson. Yes, ma'am. 2.03, action from closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I propose the motion, I move that the decision of disciplinary review team in the case involving student 2022-2023, number five, be upheld.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lyndon.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnny.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson. Yes, ma'am. I think that's all of the action. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Thursday, May 18, public meeting. If I can have everyone stand and welcome our Navy National Defense Cadet Corps as they present the colors.
Cogar. Attention. Carry. Colors. Ready, cut. Forward, march. Left turn, march. Ready, pull. Present, colors.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Colors. Ready, cut. Right turn, march. Forward, march.
That's a brand-new program that we're running from students across the county. We're actually holding it at William Bird right now. It's a great program. All right, item 4.01, announcement of changes in the agenda. Item 4.02, approval agenda with announced changes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lyndon.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnny.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 5.01, recognition of Scholastic Art Competition winner, Ms. Alexandra Henyon, Sarah Coverley. Welcome, Ms. Coverley.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nicely. This evening, I would like to recognize Alex Henyon for outstanding artistic accomplishments in the Scholastic Art Competition, the nation's longest-running and most prestigious program for creative teens. Alex, a Cave Spring High School senior, under the instruction of Ms. Natalie Strom at Burton Center for Visual Arts, set several unheard-of accomplishments. First, Alex received three of the five American Visions Awards at the regional level, when it is incredibly difficult to get even one. Second, Alex received two national medals and may be the first RCPS student to do so in one school year. Alex has been invited to Carnegie Hall to receive a silver medal for an artwork entitled "Pulling," and an American Visions Medal, the highest honor in the competition, for an artwork entitled "72." Please join me in congratulating Alex on this excellent accomplishment.
Item 5.02, recognition of Burlington Elementary, Southwest Virginia State Stock Market Game Division State Winners, Phoenix Armstrong and Jackson McMillan, Ms. Beth Grimm.
Good evening, Chair, board members, Dr. Nicely. It is my privilege to go over an award that these young men have earned at the state level. They participated in Stock Market Game, which is a comprehensive economic and personal finance education program for grades four through 12. Small student teams made up of two or four students compete for the awards of investing $100,000 in an online virtual portfolio. Student teams are given online access to their own investment portfolio. Students research and apply their investment ideas in the real-world market environment. My gifted resource teacher, Mrs. Safright, chose to have students in her elementary school participate in the program this year. Her goal was to provide them with the real-world learning experiences involving higher-level thinking and decision-making. After a few initial lessons on companies, products, brands, stocks, and risk tolerance, students began researching companies and entering trades. Team members had to work together and agree on investment decisions throughout the simulation. They used the Yahoo Finance as their own main tool for research. Each time they analyzed their portfolio, they decided whether to buy, sell, or hold stocks. There are three different game sessions in the Stock Market Game. There's a fall, spring, and a year-long competition. The Burlington team participated in the year-long competition against other teams in the state of Virginia, grades four through 12, and the team members are Phoenix Armstrong in our fifth grader and Jackson McMillan in the fourth grade, and they finished first in the competition with an overall earning of $112,000 in their portfolio. Over eight months of competition, their portfolio gained $12,000. It's not too shabby for a couple elementary young men.
Absolutely. Congratulations. We need to hire you guys for this economy. Get that mic.
Need some investment advice. Go Dogs.
Absolutely.
If you choose to play the Stock Market Game, I have one piece of good advice for you. Buy a lot of Meta.
Meta, Tesla.
That's not bad, that's good advice. That's hilarious.
I've got some.
Item 5.03, recognition from the NAMM Foundation for the Best Communities for Music Education designation, Mr. Rick Elliott.
That's hilarious.
Welcome, Mr. Elliott.
Chairman Hudson, board members, Dr. Nicely. It is my pleasure to tell you that the National Association of Music Merchants recognizes and celebrates schools and school systems across the country. This recognition is based upon the community's support and commitment to music education and to its efforts to ensure access to music for all students as part of a well-rounded education. The rise in participation of students in this elective at the secondary level across the county illustrate the importance of this curriculum to the students in our community. This is directly tied to the tireless efforts of all of our music teachers of this fine school system. It is through the continued support by the administration and school board of Roanoke County Public Schools that has allowed this school system to earn this recognition for 19 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Items 5.04, recognition of all Virginia Middle School Honors Choir, all Virginia High School Chorus, and all Virginia Band, Mr. Rick Elliott.
All of the students on this list that you were given, as well as their teachers who helped them get here, are to be commended for this achievement. Not only did they have to prepare for an audition at the district level, which is competitive, they then went into an audition at the state level, which is even more intense. They also had to commit to spending three days preparing for a concert that challenged their musical abilities. Students in all 50 states vie for seats or spots in their all-state musical groups. It is quite an honor to achieve this distinction.
Good evening. I have the honor to recognize the students from Cave Spring Middle School who auditioned against other students from around the state and were selected to be a part of the Virginia Honors Choir for middle school. These three students, on a side note, were within their respective voice parts, were in the top 10 of each voice part that they auditioned for in the state, so I think that's very exciting. Our representatives were Leana De La Cruz, Olivia Hypes, and Rain Landis.
One of them is a choir concert at William Bird High School and two award ceremonies at Glenver and at Hidden Valley High School, so they're not here, and I will do that announcing. From William Bird Middle School, Matt Bartley, choir director. We had Aubrey Blewett, grade eight, Claire Draper, grade six, and Sidney Draper, grade eight. I was told by Mr. Bartley that two of them have siblings in the high school choir, so they might not be here, so.
I'm Ashley Gallion, director at Northside High School, Northside Middle School. I'm going to, for my student who made it, will tell you all of the high school students who did it, they're the top... who did it, they're the top six of their group within our entire district. District Six Choir is the biggest district in the state, so for them to get the top four spots out of 30, 40, 50, 60, it's pretty a big deal. So I'm going to present Bibianna Bell. She made soprano I as a freshman.
Yep.
William Bird High School Choir. These folks will not be here because they're at their concert. Sindel Camper, Maggie Rusinak, Oledo Anwanwu, I'm sorry, I did practice that, Danielle Chapel, and Connor Wheeler. As you can see, they were all juniors and seniors and one sophomore. Quite an accomplishment. Moving on, Hidden Valley High School had recipient, 11th grader, base one, Paul Sealy.
Good evening. My name is Terry Haney, and I have the privilege of being the choir director at Glenver Middle and Glenver High School. We had three young ladies that are all present here tonight that made all-state honors as well. We have Raviyan Claiborne, Joanna Colleen, and Elena Smith.
Ms. Haney, why don't you come on up here? For those that don't know, Ms. Haney is retiring this year, and at Glenver, we're family, and you can't think of Glenver without her husband and Terry here, so we're going to miss you.
Also privileged to announce our all-state alternate from Cape Spring High School, who is unfortunately not able to be with us tonight, Hannah Kelly.
William Bird also had students in this category, a senior, Olivia Staten, Jason Cox, also a senior, Corbin Draper, also a senior as well. These are the alternates for William Bird High School. Hidden Valley alternate is Lauren Holland, she's a senior. Roanoke County was privileged to have two students who were able to make all Virginia Band, a freshman from Hidden Valley, Julia Pierce, who is at an award ceremony at the moment across town. She made concert band as a freshman. It's quite an accomplishment. And Mr. Nicholas Louvet, he's a senior clarinet player, made the symphonic band from Glenver High School. It is his second year. That is quite an accomplishment as well, two years in a row, all-state band. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Item 5.05, recognition of BCAT 2023 CTSO state winners, Mr. Christian Kish. Welcome, Mr. Kish.
Thank you.
Chairman Hudson, members of the school board, Dr. Nicely, thank you for having us here this evening. In April, we took our students involved in our Career and Technical Student Organizations out of town to compete in state-level competitions, so tonight we're here to celebrate all the first-place finishers in Skills USA, future business leaders of America, and family, career, and community leaders of America state competitions. These trips allow our students to compare themselves against a variety of peers in lots of different contests against other students in similar programs across the state, and as usual, our students did quite well. Want to thank our lead advisors, Jason Walls, John Worf, Amanda Kinser, and Chef Baxter. They put a lot of hours in behind the scenes, planning and coordinating these events. In addition to the teachers I just mentioned, I want to acknowledge other teachers that were involved in the success of these students, Janet Washington in our Center for Engineering, Eric Salo and Elizabeth Chapman in our Center for Mass Communications. They helped get these students the skills to, skills necessary to win at the highest level in the Commonwealth. I also want to acknowledge that, once again, all five base schools are represented tonight with our winners, although not all of them are parents, or not all of them are present. And finally, parents, once again, thank you for trusting us with your kids. As you can see tonight, you've done a good job, and I always like to say this, you're always welcome to use an evening like this to get some extra bragging rights when you're in a conversation comparing your kids with others. It's nice to be able to bring that out. Also want to wish any students going to a national competition the best. So tonight, our state Skills USA winner in related technical math is Case Crawford. For job skill demonstration for Skills USA is Mason King. Not present tonight is Laney Havens for FBLA's Public Service Announcement. We also have Emma Yanisak, Public Service Announcement state winner. Not present tonight is Hannah Holliday, who won for Culinary Arts Exhibit Confectionery. And finally, we have Chloe Mays for FCCLA's Culinary Arts Exhibit Showpieces. Congratulations.
Congrats, guys. Let me make sure I got us on the right one. 5.06, recognition of BCAT 2023-24 FCCLA State Officer, Skylar Fitzgerald. Presentation by Mr. Christian Kish.
All right, the other BCAT recognition tonight is for Skylar Fitzgerald, a second-year early childhood education student and a rising junior at William Bird. In the ECE classroom, she's recognized as a leader amongst her peers and is a role model for others. Recognizing her tonight is an embodiment of a process that took quite a while. She started working on her application for state office in the fall, and her preparedness was evident when she gave her speech in front of over 1,000 people and quite simply knocked it out of the park. She'll be attending numerous conferences, events, and board meetings next year designed to grow her and a leader in this program, so tonight we are honoring Skylar Fitzgerald for her election as first vice president for the Virginia FCCLA 2023-24 State Delegation.
Item 5.07, recognition of Cape Spring High School state champion debate team, Ms. Elizabeth Meyer and Mr. Chuck Parker.
Chairman Hudson, members of the board, Dr. Nicely, it is my privilege, as a representative of Cape Spring High School Administration, to present to you our 2022-23 debate state champions. Ms. Meyer, who is their sponsor and coach, will say a few words right here, so welcome our debate team.
Good evening, and yes, I teach, I coach debates, so I've got a speech. Okay, so good evening. I would like to thank the school board for inviting us here tonight to honor our students who have won the debate state championship this year, as well as the administration of Cape Spring for their continued support. Before I introduce the team, I would like to give you a brief background of our experiences this year. We started this year with a team of 25 members, and unfortunately, some felt that commitment was too much to continue, and that's understandable. Debate is not for the faint of heart. It is not a show-up-and-have-a-good-time kind of activity. Debate takes work, hard work. Late nights, writing new speeches every two months and practicing oratory skills over and over again. So no, debate is not for everybody. It takes dedication and a certain willingness to challenge yourself both intellectually and physically. Yes, I said physically. It takes physical effort to participate in a debate tournament where you are debating for five to six hours, sometimes for two hours straight without a break. Which leads us to the mental gymnastics a debater must master. How to write persuasive arguments and speak in a professional manner, committing hours to research on difficult topics, writing copious speeches, and rehearsing to make sure they can present all of the information in the allotted time. They also must know both sides of the argument, because the debater must defend each, and they never know which side they're going to get until mere minutes before they have to show up. Then it's time to compete. Here's where we are at a disadvantage. In Roanoke County, with its five high schools, there is only one competing debate team, us. We are the only school that participates in the SWFLE League and the VHSL. In our region, there are only two to three schools who regularly compete. Of those schools, most do not have all four debate categories, Congress, Lincoln Douglas, public forum, and policy, which means our teams sometimes show up for a tournament and have no one to compete against. Our competitors' teams usually only have two to four members. Cape Spring has 17 active debaters. This is a problem. Our students are in the difficult position of having few events to hone their skills and therefore few opportunities to get quality feedback. And going into the state competition, we know we are the underdogs. We hear what the other coaches and competitors are saying, "Don't worry about Cape Spring. They got a free pass to get here," so they have no idea how to really compete. Sadly, that assessment is almost correct. We did get a free pass because of our minimal competition. 12 of our 14 debaters got to the state level literally by just showing up. So no, we didn't have the opportunities many schools have, such as collegial coaches, multiple competitors to practice against, and judge feedback to offer advice and encouragement. But we won. We won because we did show up. We put in those long hours of research and writing and speaking. We won because these students fought with everything they had: determination, motivation, intelligence, and endurance. We fought like the knights we are, and it is our hope that our experience will motivate other schools in this county to take up the fight too, because debate is essential, and it is so very worth the hard work. So please, allow me the honor to present the following knights who earned the right to say, "I am a state champion." I'd like to present Sanjana Rajesh and Sophia Shoemaker, public forum. Christina Sue, Sarah Butler, Gabe Toriak, Claire Wei, Congress. Jeanne Picard, Lincoln Douglas. Ayush Panmajaaru is not here this evening, but he is with Hassan Dukare in policy, who won sixth place at state. Also has the honor of winning third place best speaker at state. Iris Steyer and Kirsten Bratcher-Davis, policy, fourth place at state. Kirsten Bratcher-Davis also has the honor of winning second place best speaker at state. Juliana Gabrielson, who won first place in Congress at state. Unfortunately, Ella Vance is not able to be with us this evening, but she placed first all year, and she went undefeated, seven to zero, to win first place at state. And lastly, Emma Rasharu, undefeated all year, and a first for Cape Spring. She came first in state and as well as most outstanding senator. Please congratulate these students for their incredible achievements.
Call it to the back and up front. For the two rows here. Very good. Hold tight for the other photos. Moms and dads, have at it. We're all good, congratulations.
Item 5.08, recognition of Cape Spring High School 2022 VHSL Yearbook State Champions, Mr. Chuck Parker and Ms. Lane Brummel.
Yes, this is the yearbook, and we have to remember that with athletics, you are always crowning your champions when the season is on. With yearbook, it's a year behind, because this year's yearbook is being judged throughout the summer and will be awarded next year. So I am proud to present Ms. Laney Brummel, who is our sponsor, to come up and talk about the yearbook from last year that was a state champion.
Hello. It's really hard to follow a debate coach. I'll try my best, I'll keep it short. Thank you for having me here today. Your book is very behind the scenes typically. They tend to hide behind their cameras and computers and interview notes and put the focus on everyone else, so we really appreciate being recognized today. I mostly want to say thank you to our editors-in-chief last year, who were Ava Giannini and Samantha Manico. They can't be here today, but they wish they could. They deserve so much recognition and credit, along with our amazing 11-person staff. So last year was my first year as an advisor, and we only had two returning staff members, only two people with experience in yearbook, so we were really honored to have won VHSL States last year. The kids worked incredibly hard, and they poured in so much creativity to become state champions. It just takes a lot of effort to produce a yearbook at all, let alone one that wins states. So yeah, I really appreciate being recognized for this, and thank you for your support of student journalism.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, now's the time when we're going to fill the entire room with green and gold. Item 5.09, recognition of Glenver High School, VHSL Class 2A Indoor Boys Track Team State Champions, Ms. Tammy Odom.
Good evening, everyone, board, Dr. Nicely. I am so proud and excited to be here to recognize our wonderful student athletes. They just excel in the classroom, they're great to talk to in the halls, and they've really worked hard to achieve what they have. they have in their extracurricular activities. But, I'm not gonna take up the time by me talking. I'm gonna let their coaches, who have been on the journey, talk with them. So, first is Ms. Madison Born.
Good evening. My name is Madison Born, and I am the Assistant Coach of the Indoor Track Team at Glenver High School. Thank you for having us here today. I'm here with some of the 11 athletes from our state championship team. These boys won the state championship with a total of 58 points and were nine points ahead of the second-place team. Our 4x200 and 4x400 relay teams set new state records and brought home 20 points. Our 4x8 relay and individual runners collected an additional 38 points. Senior Heath Baucher also became an individual state champion in the 500-meter dash. This is the first team in Glenver history to win an indoor or outdoor track state championship as a team. I am so proud of these athletes for their dedication and hard work, and I can't wait to watch them at the outdoor track state meet. Next, I'm also gonna tell you about Sydney Loader. Sydney Loader is our individual girls' state champion. This year at the indoor state meet, Sydney ran the 55-meter dash, the 55-meter hurdles, and the 300-meter dash, along with high jumping. Sydney placed in all of her events and secured three individual state titles and set a new 300-meter dash state record. Sydney has been a part of our four girls' team state championships, has over 20 state titles, and continues to defend, continues to defend her state champion status in both indoor and outdoor track. Congratulations, Sydney, and thank you again for having us here.
Well done.
Next, 5.11, recognition of Glenver High School, VHSL 2A Wrestling State Champions, Ms. Tammy Odom.
I'm also very proud to recognize our individual state champion wrestlers, and to do that is Coach Klein.
Hi, everyone. First off, thank you for your recognition today. We appreciate the recognition from the board and Dr. Nicely. These boys have worked tremendously hard throughout the course of a grueling season to make it to the top of the podium, so we truly appreciate the recognition here today. It's my pleasure to introduce these guys. First off, we have Chase Miller. Chase is a sophomore. His wrestling matches were as exciting as his choice of dress. You can tell that. Chase was one of our undefeated wrestlers this year. He, he was 15-0. He was a region champion and a state champion. Chase also was an All-American at the national level, placing in the NHSCA tournament this year. So, Chase Miller. Next is Ethan Flowers. So, Ethan wrestled in the 175-pound class force this year. He had a record of 34 and 3. Ethan was a region champ and a state champ. So, Ethan Flowers. And finally, our senior, Jake Klein. Jake was also one of our undefeated wrestlers this year. He had a 32-0 record. He was a region champ and also a state champ. Jake is also gonna walk on at Virginia Tech for wrestling in the fall. So, Jake Klein.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
And then next, recognition of Glenver High School, Class 2A State Swim Champions, Ms. Tammy Odom.
Very excited to talk about our state champion swimmers, but to do so is Coach Shannon Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Nicely, it's, um, it's my pleasure for the fifth consecutive year to bring a state championship swimmer or swimmers to you. On the first four seasons, it was our girls' team that were standing here. This year, our boys' team took the podium. My very first year, five years ago, we only had one boy on the team. This year, we won 25% of the events, state championship. I, I break up, I choke up a little bit when I talk about these guys because they put so much work into it. Yeah, Connor Wilks, who is a state champion in the 500-yard freestyle. Connor won the event by the length of the pool. That's 20 lengths of the pool. He won it by a length of the pool. And he also set a personal best in the 100-yard butterfly, winning the state championship. He was also the, um, the anchor on our 4x100-yard relay team, along with teammates, freshman over there, I believe he's a freshman, but he is, Avery Thompson. Landon Karin's also a freshman, couldn't be with us tonight. He was on that state championship relay team. And the old man, the senior in the middle there, Lucas Bertlebo, who, who swam his best time of the season, as did all these, all four of these guys swim their best time of the season in that last, very last event of the, of the, of the meet, which was the one, a relay. They also broke the school record by 17 seconds in that relay. So, ladies and gentlemen, our state championship swimmer.
Okay, so, is there one more Glenver? Okay. Recognition of Mr. Charlie Fowler, 2023 Elizabeth Abernathy Hall Award for Environmental Education winner, Ms. Tammy Sauls.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Superintendent Nicely. We have some exciting news that we'd like to share with you regarding Charlie Fowler, an earth and environmental science teacher at Glenver High School. Charlie is the recipient of the National Elizabeth Hall Award for Environmental Education. I'd like to present Fayetta Weaver, a past president of the Mill Mountain Garden Club of America, who will tell you a little, a little bit about the Elizabeth Hall Award and how Charlie Fowler was selected to receive this prestigious award. Fayetta.
Good evening. Mill Mountain Garden Club is a member of the Garden Club of America, which is, was founded in 1913 and now has 199 garden clubs across the nation. In addition to the things you immediately think of about garden clubs, which is growing and arranging flowers, the GCA is also very involved with informed advocacy on environmental issues, providing substantial scholarships to students in a wide range of fields from botany to landscape architecture and civic improvement projects. We also annually recognize individuals from all over the country who are accomplishing remarkable things in their fields of expertise. One of these awards is the Elizabeth Abernathy Hall Award for Early Environmental Education to recognize an individual who through working with children and horticulture and the environment has inspired the appreciation of the beauty and fragility of our planet. Charlie Fowler's program for the Mill Mountain Garden Club last year really wowed us. His brilliant incorporation of multiple disciplines in creating a vibrant, healthy environment on the Glenver campus immediately sent us searching for a way to advertise and applaud his efforts. So, we proposed him for this prestigious award. There were numerous qualified applications from all over the country, but your teachers' accomplishments made him a shoe-in. We were delighted to learn of his receiving this award and accompanying a $1,000 check. Congratulations, Charlie.
I'd also throw in there, Charlie, how many, how many thousand of dollars did you give for students' scholarships this year?
6,000 this year, which brings our total to 15,000.
15,000. All of this made hard work. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Item 5.14, recognition of the 2022 PRSE Summit Awards, Ms. Jennifer Eddy.
And I'm gonna introduce Jen. This is Jen Eddy. She's the President of the Blue Ridge Chapter of the Public Relations Society of America, and she's going to recognize her very own Chuck Leinberger, who won way too many awards when I was able to attend his luncheon.
Mr. Leinberger, will you come up here with your award?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I was excited to come just to make the announcements that I have, but it was an honor to get to witness all of these incredible students and their accomplishments as well. Certainly, there are a number of incredible teachers and professionals and administrators that are pouring into these students, but it's not just them. It's also your staff that are working hard to do it, and it's impressive to watch. It's impressive as a mother. It's impressive as a public relations professional. And as the President of the Blue Ridge Chapter of the Public Relations Society of America, I'm especially honored to be here tonight to tell you about a record-setting run of awards that Roanoke County Schools won this year on behalf of the work that the gentleman beside me, the friend beside me, and the fellow board member for many years was recognized with. So, this year, at the Blue Ridge PRSA Summit Awards, a ceremony and an event that we hold annually here in the Roanoke Valley to recognize winners of setting new standards for public relations that advance their organizations, the Roanoke County Public Schools brought home 14 different summit awards. Pretty impressive stuff. These awards cover the communities from Harrisonburg down to the bottom of the state and from Danville and Pennsylvania County all the way over. So, a huge number of organizations, of communities, commercial entities, schools, all different kinds of businesses that are using public relations and professional communications to advance their business mission and goals, and it's pretty impressive that this school district really just swept in the way that they did. So, I wanted to share with you tonight, there were four awards in particular that I think are of particular note. Some of the things that were recognized were Graduation Live 2022, Convocation 2022, School Board Live as an initiative, and the 2022 Load the Bus Award Unprogrammed, something that was done in partnership with Roanoke City Schools. I think that collaboration is pretty neat and special for our students to see as well. The 2022 Load the Bus Awards, or Load the Bus Event was also awarded Best in Show. It's worth noting that these awards are not judged by people in the region. Another chapter randomly assigned throughout the country always judges based on the awards and nominations, and there's two categories for both campaigns and tactics, and you all were celebrated in both categories with Best in Show. So, very pleased and very honored to be able to present this information to you tonight and to honor my good friend Chuck Leinberger. Thank you.
Did you wanna speak? Not necessarily. You've heard me plenty, but I definitely thank everyone here because this is a reflection of everything that we do as Roanoke County Public Schools. This is not me. This is everybody who was watching, everybody who was here. This is that, that seal that, that we all work towards.
Reflection of Chuck Leinberger.
I think it's all good, Chuck.
I thought he was gonna get him a word for keeping me out of trouble this year.
We're adding an added category to Jim.
Looking good, guys. Perfect. All righty. Item 5.15, recognition of the 2022-2023 Student Advisory Council Seniors, Ms. Chrissy Maloney. I was gonna say the other name, and I did not wanna mess it up.
Schleicher. Rhymes with biker. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Nicely. It is my honor each year to work with this fantastic group of leaders that we have here in Roanoke County, and as all of you well know, the SAC is a student-run organization, so I am going to turn things over to next year's senior rep, Brennan Metz.
Hello, everyone. Hello to the board, hello, Mr. Chairman, and hello, Dr. Nicely. It's good to see you all here tonight. There's a lot of ways you can present these next few individuals, but the best way to put it is that they've been serving the county for over half a decade now. They've all done a tremendous job in what they do here at the SAC. Without further ado, they're gonna give their names, where they're from, and what their plans are after high school.
I'm Bailey Warden. I am at William Byrd, and next year, I'll be attending Virginia Tech and majoring in Dairy Science.
I'm Abel Blanford. I'm from Hinn Valley, and I'll be attending Liberty University studying nursing.
I'm Kenan Fetsor. I'm from Cape Spring. I will be attending Virginia Tech for engineering.
And I'm Emma Rasharu. I will also be at Virginia Tech. I will be getting a dual degree in political science and public relations with a minor disability studies. So, now, with that, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Nicely. This evening, I am both excited and saddened to present to you my final report for the SAC Senior Representative for the 2022-2023 school year. This year, as the SAC, I am proud to say that we led a year of productivity, collaboration, and conversation, beginning this year with our annual reception to our SAC retreat where for the first time, we had the opportunity to host at Explorer Park, where upon the treetops, the SAC learned to support one another through difficult obstacles while utilizing their critical thinking, communication, and collaboration skills. Upon kicking off the year, we advanced, housed a number of speakers and activities, the first of which we heard from Mrs. Nancy Hans, the Executive Director of the Prevention Council, who, in informing us of the influence of phone usage, the SAC was able to assist in the county's participation in the National Unplug Day. Other speakers across this year include the incredible Roanoke County staff members, Mrs. Susan Peterson, Mr. Chuck Leinberger, Ms. Teresa Gibbons, and Mr. John Hartness, who provided insight into areas of the county students often overlook, providing students with the knowledge of the county's inner workings to take back and be mindful of across their own schools. This year's presenter has not only enriched the SAC members' understanding of their school system, but offered a platform for this year's implementation of student input. From taking Mr. Leinberger's survey and county communications, where we learned from our SAC members, the greatest tools for communication amongst the student population are email and social media, to Mrs. Roberson's survey on students' perspective of areas of the school system deserving of funding, we learned from our students that they find faculty bonuses, cleaning supplies, and supplies for teachers who take on extracurriculars to be the most prominent amongst their thoughts. And to Ms. Gibbons' description of guidance resources in the county, we learned that students wish for greater one-on-one appointments with their guidance counselors in order to discuss more thoroughly their educational options and their future unique to them. In between series of presentations, the SAC also had the opportunity to write thank-you cards to unappreciated and favor staff members across the county and plan a student leadership conference, which took place on April 28th. On the matter of the student leadership conference, the SAC ended up hosting a total of 84 students from across each of the Roanoke County High Schools and Middle Schools from grade levels eight through 12, who, who through this year's theme, Leaders All Around, learned of the attributes of a leader on a global scale, providing them each with a set of tools necessary to lead across any and all landscapes. This year, we had the honor to house Mr. George Metz as our keynote speaker to share on his experience with the Ukrainian crisis, as well as the leadership exuded by the Ukrainian people across the war. We also maintained the honor to house six breakout speakers, Dr. Henry Ford, formerly of Virginia Tech, Dr. Anthony Bathaboni of Carillion and Virginia Tech, Ms. Lisa Wombush of Special Olympics Virginia, Mrs. Terry Hartley, former Air Force pilot, Mr. Chuck Leinberger of Roanoke County Public Schools, and Sergeant Dan Walters of Roanoke County Police Department. I believe it is safe to say that we had quite the eventful year, but that is all in credit to each of you and Dr. Nicely. For your consistent support of the SAC, I want to thank each of you for the role that each of you and your potent role in facilitating our goal as the SAC from our annual Q and A with Dr. Nicely, to each of your participation in this year's student leadership conference, the school board breakouts. Each of you work to instill the purpose of the SAC, which is being the connection between the students and the administration of Roanoke County Public Schools. I greatly appreciate in my time the SAC, and I thank each of you for this opportunity and your personal assistance and guidance along the way. Going forward, you are in very good hands, as I'm happy to formally announce, Brennan Metz will be your 2023-2024 Senior Representative. Brennan Metz will be your 2023-2024 Senior Representative of the SAC. So for one last time, I thank all of you for making the SAC what it is and for the opportunity it has been to serve as your senior representative.
I'll say a few words. Emma has been amazing. Your communication skills and leadership have just impressed me all year long. Really appreciate everything you've done. I feel like we've accomplished so much with that student directly to us kind of communication that has created a, I know for each of us, we hear firsthand what the students are expecting and what they need. And it's just been wonderful to work with you. Thank you. We're proud of you. We know you're going to go, you're going to go places. Thank you so much.
Well done.
Congratulations.
We go differently this time. Let mom steps her first run.
You'll have to come to my graduation?
Yes.
I'll do it for you.
All right. Item 7.01, public hearing declaring the Poke Farm property as surplus. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in regards to the public hearing for the Poke Farm property as surplus?
Need to officially open that public hearing?
Is that?
Okay. And then close it.
And then close it. Okay. Motion for that? Or do we just open it up?
Just open it up to the floor.
All right. Floor is open. I don't see anybody here to speak tonight, so we will now close that. Moving on to item 8.01, hearing of citizens and delegations. First up, we have Mr. Damon Geter. With this, we have three minutes for each individual to speak. We ask that you address the chairman and not individual board members and keep your comments respectful and polite. Welcome, Mr. Geter. Sure. You'll see three lights on the podium.
Thank you.
Red, yellow, and green. When you get to yellow, I believe there's a minute left, and then when you get to red, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Damon Geter, and I'm a resident of Roanoke, Roanoke County, Virginia, North County. I want to preface my comments that I care not if someone is LGBTQA. That is their decision. I have friends and business partners that are gay. What I'm here to talk about is the child abuse, grooming, conditioning, and indoctrination by sexual predators disguised as teachers and staff at Glen Cove Elementary. These events transpired over the last two years, and I was only made aware of them over the last month. On April 15th, while camping, I heard my son talking to another student at Glen Cove Elementary, and they were talking about how a staff person had told them that a boy could be a girl and a girl could be a boy, and that they could decide. After diving into the conversation with the two boys, it became apparent that the guidance counselor, the school psychologist, the assistant principal, and the music teacher were bent on indoctrinating our children on LGBTQA and not on reading, writing, and arithmetic. The kids said that the music teacher, who was on maternity leave, had decorated the entire music room in LGBTQA decorations. They claimed there were 30 to 40-plus items in the classroom. I immediately contacted the school board member I knew and a couple of others. This was on Saturday, April 15th. On Monday, April 17th, I contacted the principal of Glen Cove and asked to come to view the classroom. She told me that she would look at, look at it and call me back. When she called me back, she told me that yes, there were quite a few items that were apparent LGBTQA, and that she removed them. The next day, my wife and I visited the school for lunch with our son, and walking into the office, there was a Roanoke County psychologist wearing a LGBTQA lanyard. We asked to view the music room, and when viewing the music room, there were 12 to 15 more LGBTQA decorations that the principal had accidentally overlooked, and there were five to 10 drawings by children on the wall depicting pride flags and pride walkways in a music room, not an art room, mind you, but in a music room. Why had children in music class just miraculously drawn these? And virtually all the drawings only depicted LGBTQA, not a dog, not a cat, not an American flag, but LGBTQA flags. On April 19th, I called and asked to speak to Dr. Nicely, and Ms. McClung called me back. I expressed my disgust and anger at the situation, and she promised to look into it. The feedback I received is that Ms. McClung did look into it and addressed the situation appropriately. After subsequent conversations with other parents, it appears that this music teacher had provided her classes last year with gay pride flags, and this was addressed last year. Obviously, she thumbed her nose at administration and did what she wanted to do this year anyway. After all this came to light, I started looking at what was going on around Glen Cove. I found multiple staff and teachers wearing LGBTQA clothing, glasses, lanyards, pens, and every single day in the, every, every single day in the school dropped offline. The yearbook handle I gave you, that is the yearbook that is being published, that was published and given out to children this year. Who approved that? Who thought those pictures were appropriate? Board, these are five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11-year-olds. The school has no right, no place to teach our children about sex, sexual orientation, transgender, or anything other than reading, writing, and arithmetic. I had to explain to my nine-year-old what transgender was because Glen Cove Elementary woke staff put me in a situation where I had to, and that is not the place of any supposed educator at any time. We all know that if five to six faculty and staff were teaching kids about God or the Bible, the courts would already be involved, and everyone would be in an uproar. Still, we have five-plus staff and faculty conditioning, grooming, and abusing children, and no one says a thing. I will tell you for one that I will not stand for it. It will not happen, and I will go as far as I have to to ensure it doesn't. The teachers and staff need to teach their curriculum and not their woke progressive ideologies. The secret Facebook groups that have been started about me, the people posting anonymously that seem to know every single detail of my complaint, we all know that is those involved or their families.
Mr. Geter, you're going to have to wrap up because we're about a minute over.
Got two sentences. Can I finish those?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. We all know that it is those involved or their families. They don't scare me. I have no fear of them. It doesn't matter whether they say it publicly or in their little private Facebook pages hiding behind their computer screens. They have called the Roanoke Times, the TV stations. It matters not. Right is right, wrong is wrong. And I will say this, it is time for the silent majority to no longer be silent.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have David Spangler.
Hello, my name is David Spangler. I'm a resident of North Kim Roanoke County. I've raised two children who have attended Roanoke County Schools. I'm a product of Roanoke County Schools. My wife is a product of Roanoke County Schools. I couldn't think of any other place to bring my family back to anywhere else but Roanoke County. And it concerns me. The same situation concerns me. My grandson brought to my attention some of these same things, and I had conversation. I actually spoke to my granddaughters. I have twin granddaughters that are in the second grade, and they're being taught, they're being told things. So it is a concern of mine to see that the kids are starting in elementary school, starting to discuss these things. And it's not just coming from kid to kid. It's coming from some of the administrators, and it's coming from some of the teachers in that district or in this school system. And that's a very big concern. I'm a 32-year teaching veteran. I taught for Roanoke City Schools at William Community High School for 32 years. I know what diversity looks like. I encourage diversity. I think it's a great thing. I think it's awfully young for us to be discussing LGBTQ-type topics at an elementary age. And so because of that concern, I'm here tonight to, to ask that you look into this and be genuine when you look into it and make sure that that is not where we're headed here. I think it's a concern that a lot of parents have. They're just afraid to come up and speak out. There is backlash. There is this cancel culture that's, that we all know about, and I think there's a concern there. I'm not afraid to. I've enjoyed my retirement and moving on to other things. I love my family, and I want to protect my family. And I can't think of a better place to have my family than Roanoke County and in Roanoke County Public Schools. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Cyfers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight to talk about what is going on. Sorry, I'm nervous. In my eight- and 10-year-old children's school of Glen Cove Elementary. The unacceptable propaganda being pushed on them in a place where they're supposed to be able to go for an education from what, from an acceptable curriculum. What I don't need is my eight-year-old daughter coming home from school and asking me how two mommies had a baby. We all know why movie posters are made. We know why billboards are popular. We know why someone wears lapel pins. It is to advertise, support, strike conversations, spark interest, and even persuade. There's a reason why certain faculty at my children's school are using these things, and it's not to remind themselves of their own support of LGBTQ. If that were the case, they could keep it in their pocket or in their car or in their home. But no, they want our children to ask questions that no five-to-11-year-old child has any business discussing with anyone at a school. There are rules and guidelines for a reason, and there is right and wrong. The faculty at these schools, to my understanding, are not allowed to have large crosses or Jesus Saves posters there for a reason, because a child should not learn religion from a school, despite the fact that we have freedom of religion. We don't hang posters of guns throughout schools, despite the fact we have the right to bear arms, because a school is not the place for children to learn about that. I was always taught that your rights end where my rights begin. While my child has the right to go to school without someone preying on their vulnerable mind, without a predator indoctrinating them in their beliefs. I have absolutely no problem with the LGBT community, and I hope that everyone lives their lives in the manner that makes them the happiest individual possible for the short time we're on this earth. Just keep it away from my child while they're at school. I also have no problem with heterosexuality either, but my child doesn't need to learn that from a third-grade music teacher or any other teacher or faculty member. I'm their parent. I can handle it. I have many other issues with the curriculum and SOLs and so on, but right now, at this moment, this is the absolute most out-of-control and unacceptable situation and needs immediate attention, and we will not stop until it is properly taken care of. My one regret is that I spent the last almost five years trusting my school, not visiting and finding out what was going on. It's not a mistake I'll make again, and it's one I will make sure every parent I know understands and takes seriously going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Francie Cyfers. Did I pronounce that right?
You did.
Thank you.
Good evening, Roanoke County School Board. My name is Francie Cyfers, and I am a parent of two children who attend Glen Cove Elementary. I have been a member of Roanoke County since I was born, and I graduated from Cave Spring in 2002. As a nurse in the community, I work to serve, protect, and advocate for those that cannot. Tonight, I am here to advocate for those individuals who have no voice. I'm speaking of two specific groups. The first group is the children, those who with developing minds, inquiring questions, and expressive thoughts and ideas. We encourage diversity and differences in our house and in our friendships and in our families. We, as parents, teach our children right from wrong. We, as parents, teach about God. We, as parents, teach about guns. We, as parents, teach about diversity. We, as parents, teach about sex and relationships. We, as parents, teach and grow our children's minds about topics we see fit and at the appropriate times as we know our children's minds. What I did not mention in any of those things was what teachers teach my children about. There is a particular curriculum for a reason that teachers are to follow and allowed to speak to. What is not included in that list is any of the things that are listed above. Children in elementary schools specifically are vulnerable. Their minds are growing and developing and expanding. What I don't need is teachers imposing their ideas either through words, thoughts, actions, or posters or activities. My two children are pleasers. They want to make their teachers proud. They will do and say and agree to make sure that they are loved by their teachers at school. The other group that I want to advocate for is the teachers. Those teachers that understand their important role as elementary school teachers. They have views on topics, as we all do, but they don't bring them into the school. They understand the rules and do not push the boundaries. They follow what the county and supervisors have set forth. They love our children without preying on their innocent minds. Those teachers that cannot speak up for fear of punishment from others or are being bullied or outcasted because they are following the rules of the county. I am saddened that I have to be here tonight to bring these feelings to the board. I'm saddened that a small group of individuals feels the need to push their agenda, not only on the teachers, but on my children and their friends and other children that I care about. I'm saddened that I may not know all that my children have been succumbed to at school, the ideas and thoughts and beliefs that have no place in school. Do I believe that everyone has a right to believe and say what they want? Absolutely. But there are times and places, and what these elementary school teachers and administrators have allowed to continue during school hours is unacceptable and goes against policy and procedure for Roanoke County. I thank you for your time and your willingness to listen to me this evening and hope you can take this issue very seriously and implement change to protect the children and teachers who cannot speak up. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to item non-consent agenda. These are items that we have previously discussed in meetings. We have a...
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we approve item number nine, 901 through 909 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 10.01, William Byrd High School Asbestos Abatement Plan, Mr. Todd Cagles. Welcome, Mr. Cagles.
As you know, we've discovered asbestos during the William Byrd High School renovation project in the Wing B. We received a change order from Avis Construction for approximately $1.5 million for the asbestos abatement and then the additional delay caused by the asbestos abatement. Mike Kaufman, who's our project manager over there, identified about $100,000 worth of savings off that $1.5 million. Mike's doing a great job, by the way. Now, Avis's quote did not include about $50,000 that's needed for third-party air quality monitoring during the abatement process. If there were a breach, we would want to know, you know, given that it's in a, in a public school, obviously. So we're recommending that you approve the funding as detailed by Ms. Peterson for the full $1.5 million. And again, that'll allow us to fund the air quality monitoring.
Just, just a question and a quick comment. So the $100,000, as we were briefed in work session, Travis Anderson, the assistant principal at Byrd, did say they identified an area, so that should bring it to $1.4, and still some other savings that may be able to ascertain from insurance and some of that stuff. You say they're asking, or that we need to do the air quality for 50K above that. Correct me if I'm wrong, did they not give us, was that a cost estimate or was that a quote to do this?
What they gave us was a quote to do it, but they did not include in their quote the air quality monitoring. They, they're doing some, in their quote was an initial air quality test, but we want to monitor during the entire process because there's kids and staff in the building.
I just don't understand why that wasn't included, I guess, is my frustration.
We'd have to ask Avis. I don't know.
I mean, you can't give us a quote and then come back and say, well, we got to do this too. You know, I don't understand that.
May not be a requirement that, that it be monitored, but I think for our safety purpose, we would certainly want that.
That's right, and it was recommended by the OSHA folks that were on site there that we do that, that we have our own air quality monitoring during the process.
It just doesn't make sense, but anyway, we got to do it, so. It's frustrating to get a quote for a million and a half and come back and say, oh, wait, we forgot $50,000 that needs to be added to it. But anyway, unless somebody else objects, I guess it sounds like you are okay with it.
Will they be doing the monitoring, or will we be doing that ourselves?
We're hiring a third party to do the monitoring.
Is, tell me, has this been done in the past at schools, I assume?
The air quality monitoring?
Yes.
I honestly don't know. I haven't been, you know, part of those projects. We can check and find out.
What choice do you have, I guess? I mean, I, I think...
That's why it's $1.5 million.
I think, yeah, I think Avis ought to have some corporate... I think, yeah, I think Avis ought to have some culpability in that to come back and ask that we need 50,000 more, but, you know, we're here to approve that, so I don't know if we can, you know, ask them to participate in that 50K. Again, they, they gave us a quote. Is, is the 50K something we do above and beyond, or is that something they should have included in that quote? That's what I can't figure out.
I'd characterize it as what we're doing above and beyond to protect the kids and staff there, right? It's, it's not required for the abatement itself, but if there were a breach and you're, you know, them blowing asbestos into the rest of the building and you're not doing air quality monitoring in the rest of the building, then, you know, we'd never know that, so.
Again, I, I just go back to that, to me, it's got to be a part of the process. You know, there is, there, at that point, they're as liable as we are. Now, again, we got to do it. I'm not, I don't want anybody to say, oh, he's saying not do this. No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying it's frustrating that we just got a quote, and now we're saying we got to add 50K to that quote, and it's, it's just frustrating, so. However, you know, we got to do it, but we got to tighten these things down. You know, when we do, Cove and Kundif cannot come back and say, well, we missed asbestos. I mean, this is just not, and again, I know you didn't start this project, but that is, it's just not easy going back to our citizens and saying, well, you know, here's some more money we've got to spend that wasn't, wasn't expected. So I just hope we do it, you know, with Cove and Kundif. We just learn our lesson and we get this, we get this right. So with that, I, you know, certainly will approve, but I guess that's the only discussion.
Yes, sir, and just so you know, we have already contracted for NESHAP reports on both Kundif and Cove, which are comprehensive asbestos studies, so we make sure we have that information on hand before those bids are put together, those projects.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve-
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve item number 10.01.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. 10.02 Budget Ordinance Update, Ms. Susan Peterson. Welcome.
Hopefully, this is the last time I have to come up here. Good evening, Mr. Hudson, members of the board. I do come before you to provide an adjustment to our categorical spending for our ordinance for the 2023-2024 annual budget. Initially, when my team analyzed the categorical spending to move costs to a more accurate category for the new ordinance way the county has asked for, we did not address the student activity fund, and we did not move any money across the categories. This fund is unique because it consists of our school-based accounts. Historically, we never even approved a budget in this, this fund because we reported them as a fiduciary activity in our annual financial report. Many of their activities are funded through fundraising and other student fees. So their, their, their money coming in is a little bit different than the money coming into the school board. So reporting them as a fiduciary fund was the right way to go in the past. However, accounting rules are only getting more difficult as we progress through time. And back in 2021, the Government Accounting Standards Board issued a new rule that said that instead of reporting our activity funds as a fiduciary fund, we would have to pull them into a governmental fund, which meant we had to approve a budget. So we started that year with our first budget. It's the best estimate we can come up with at the beginning of the year. As you know, we do provide a report for our student activities attached to the consent agenda every month, and that is a cash basis report. We do not pull those numbers into our, our school board accounting system until year end. And because of all of this, we really don't even know, we don't analyze categories. Their accounting system is completely different. It doesn't even look anything like, they don't have categories in their accounting system. And so because of that, we don't typically budget to categories for them until year end, when we actually go through a lot of transactions and pull them into the school board budget. However, even given knowing this information, knowing that we will probably have to ask for an amendment at the end of the year for our categories related to the student activity fund, the staff over at the county did want us to make our best estimate, and so that's what we have done. So if you look at page three, the only change, that's page two, can you scroll down? The only change here are between object codes, between other charges and materials and supplies, and that's only because of the object code that relates to the category. It just, it's out, fell out. So then on page four, if you go down to the next page, this, we moved about 5.2 million out of instruction and spread it across the other categories, as you see in your report and on the screen. So I just recommend that you go ahead and approve this so that we can get it in front of the board of supervisors for the second reading of the ordinance for our 2023-2024 annual budget.
Do you have any concerns with any of these items?
I mean, it's going to have to be changed at some point.
Have to be changed.
We're working you to death, I'm sorry.
More control. That's all that's about. But it is what it is. Yeah, it's just more control. Let them vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we accept point 10.02 Budget Ordinance Update.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Item 10.03, Declaring Pogue Farm as Surplus, Mr. Todd Cagles.
The board recently expressed the desire to sell the 55 acres that we own, known as Pogues Farm. The first step in that process is to designate it as surplus, and so we're recommending that tonight you take action on designating that property as surplus so that we can begin the process to put it up for sale.
Make a motion that we-
We're going to make a motion.
Declare Pogue Farm as surplus.
Just a few comments, or, that's what I was going to say, we probably need to discuss a couple of it, go ahead. Yeah, obviously, the property purchased back in 2007, or officially, I think, January of 2008. I know there were some things that I saw online today, and, and some people shared some text messages and things with me that we had coerced the Pogues into selling. I don't believe that's accurate. I spoke with superintendent that, from the time when it was purchased, two former school board members that were on this board. Obviously, nobody is still here from when that was purchased. And then two members of the board of supervisors, and, and there was never any eminent domain threats that we were going to take that property. As, as some people tried to share with me today, was that the school board forced them to sell the property to us, so that it just wasn't the case. So being property that I don't ever foresee us using in the future, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to hold on to it, to me.
So in this process, we declare it surplus, and then the county sells it? It's their responsibility, is it our responsibility in terms of, we know?
Yes, sir, but the advice we've gotten from, speaking with the county administrator, is that their, their only role was going to be to appropriate the money back to us, which they have to do. They can legally, the board of supervisors could retain the, the funds. My information from the county administrator, there's no intention to do that. They intend to let us, you know, declare it surplus. And then we would actually do the, the selling of the property ourselves and engage in, you know, doing that the proper way. And then the only step would be to go to the board of supervisors to ask them to appropriate the money to us.
Okay.
Other comment?
Sure.
I had the pleasure of being on the board of supervisors at that time, and there was no imminent domain of my knowledge that we discussed at all concerning the Pogue property, so. Just wanted to let that be for record.
Well, my hope is that they would turn those funds back over at, you're basically saying, that's the feeling you're getting. All right. There is one motion, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 11.01, Recruitment and Retention Support Grant Award, Mr. Jim Bradshaw.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Nicely. Everybody's spending money, but I've got some good news. For Superintendent Memo 59-23, the VDOE has awarded $30,000 to Roanoke County Public Schools for Recruitment and Retention Support Grant. Roanoke County Public Schools plans to utilize the grant to provide additional tuition assistance with a focus on employees taking courses towards initial licensure or completing the requirements for their provisional license. Staff recommends approval of the grant and the appropriation of $30,000 from the grant fund grant contingency. And this is just information tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any questions? All right. 11.02 Recruitment Incentive for Public Education Grant Award, Mr. Jim Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Per Superintendent Memo 176-22, VDOE has awarded $10,000 to Roanoke County Public Schools for the Recruitment Incentive for Public Education, or better known as the RITE Grant. This grant is issued to support recruitment efforts to school divisions hiring to fill certain instructional positions. Roanoke County Public Schools had two employees that qualified for this grant. Staff recommends the approval of the grant and the appropriation of $10,000 from the grant fund grant contingency.
Any question?
That's great stuff.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You think we can do positive for our employees?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Item 12.01, Report by Roanoke County School Superintendent, Dr. Nicely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, first of all, I want to congratulate our Mr. Leinberger for receiving those awards this evening. We have among many, many staff members who work very hard and are very active and fill many roles. Mr. Leinberger certainly wears all kinds of hats, and we appreciate his hard work in bringing those awards in. Speaking of which, this week, of course, we're celebrating the accomplishments of our graduating seniors, and Mr. Leinberger has a huge role in that with his graduation live broadcast. But we do want to congratulate, of course, all of our seniors and all their hard work, along with their families who've supported them along the way, all of our teachers, our staff, our principals, who have made that happen. So the graduations for our five high schools will be on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, or next week, and we congratulate all of them. Just finally, and I believe she's left the room, but I wanted to brag on Emma Rosero just a bit because not only for her service from the Student Advisory Council this year, as well as the Debate Team Award she received this year, but I'm also on the board locally for the Virginia Western Community College. And much to my surprise, this past week, when we had the commencement for Virginia Western, here comes Emma across the stage, so she literally got her associate's degree from Virginia Western before she even graduated high school. So that's quite an accomplishment. And then the surprises keep coming. This evening, Emma presented me with a copy of her new book, which apparently has just come out, The Wind Beneath the Willow. And so Emma, the, the author, published author, author before even graduating high school. So I wish you were still here to brag on her, but that's quite an accomplishment.
Wow. She needs to know information before the meeting.
No kidding.
What's the title of the book, Ken, again?
Oh, that's amazing.
Nonfiction? You didn't even-
Wow.
I will be buying it, Emma.
Amazing young lady, for sure.
She is. That whole group. You know, when we did the, well, I'm sorry, I'll wait, but, yeah, they're, they're just amazing.
Go ahead, you started now.
All right. Item 13.01, Reports and Inquiries of Board Members. Mr. London?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trying to keep it brief, but just an exciting time of year. I've had the chance to go to so many of the different, the pending ceremony that they had for our medical students over at the CT, BCAT, and then the Registered Apprenticeship Event, and Band, was it the Northside Band Banquet last night? Just such an exciting time of year to see all these students recognized for all the hard work that they've put into it, and want to thank our teachers for, for their roles and, and those band directors and coaches and everybody else who's just had such a supportive role of getting those kids to, to graduation, so. Is, did certainly hear some concerning stuff tonight that I hope we'll get an update on. So there's certainly no room for indoctrination in our schools, and, and that's something that, that I know that this board is, is certainly going to, to look into, so. With that, I want to wish everybody good luck with, with graduation next week, and I appreciate you keeping this meeting in an hour and a half, Mr. Chairman, because Mr. Greenway had us here for five hours.
We provide state-
I haven't finished speaking yet. It's not over yet.
Then you have three and a half hours left for your monologue.
We got time, Mike, we got time.
We got time. Let's see.
Mr. Chairman, so as a school board, we affect and approve-
I thought you weren't going to speak today.
I am speaking about this. As a school board, we affect, approve, and change policy. That's our job, one of our jobs, our main roles. And I agree, our current policy, 6.02, is lacking and needs to clearly, clearly set expectations and limitations when it comes to propaganda in our classrooms. My belief is the only flag that should be flying in our schools is the American flag. If you can't fly religious flags, if you can't fly satanic flags or political flags, you just can't have it both ways. Flags are not essential for demonstrating and teaching kindness, accepting others, or embracing all our differences. The only flags, again, that should be in our schools are the American flag.
Mr. Ray?
Oh, you saving him the last?
I can go.
That's that vice chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ditto to some of the things that were said with the board members. I won't repeat all of those, but I just want to congratulate teachers, staff, students, Dr. Nicely and his staff, and everyone involved, the hard work they did this year and got us through, and the graduates that will be graduating. I'm very proud of Emma, as she has been our rep and certainly has been an extraordinary citizen and a student. And we look forward to our graduation next week, and I hope that everyone will have a nice summer. I know some of our athletes are still involved and won't quite have, won't be able to have their vacation until after they finish those athletic activities. But we certainly do appreciate on the year that we've had so far and look forward to next year. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I really don't have a whole lot, except that I'll echo the sentiments somewhat that have been raised here, and, and we have some amazing teachers. And to the extent that we just keep the main thing, the main thing, we're all in, you know, we're all in good shape, if that's, if that's our focus, and that's, that's what our focus needs to, to remain on, is educating these kids to the best of our ability. And with that, coming Tuesday in our case with William Bird, it's, you know, I think now this will be my eighth graduation, seventh or eighth with, and not just in high school, this will, just for the school board. So, you know, and I feel like almost when we're standing up there and we're congratulating the students as they walk across, I almost feel like we're graduating, because you can kind of take a, you know, a deep breath and let it go. I, I never make this about us, because it is never about us. It's always faculty, teachers, students, staff. But it's just a very nice culmination of feeling like, all right, you know, you get a two-month break, and, you know, we'll still have a couple of meetings and work sessions that continue, you know, to evolve, to get ready for the next year, but it's just, you know, here goes those kids that have worked so hard and put so much into this. And then you hear the SAC kids like Emma and some of those folks, they're amazing, amazing students. And so, you know, and, and then you'll hear the kids called across the stage that are, you know, going to Harvard or, or going to, I think, I, I remember one or one maybe that went to MIT, and, you know, and, and these are obviously from Bird that I remember, and so it's just amazing. You don't think about coming from a little place like Vinton or from our area or even the other districts and hearing about these kids going there, so.
So looking forward to Tuesday and celebrating the kids that are graduating this year. And with that, that's all I've got. I want it to be all about celebration for these kids.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, and I, again, will echo the same comments that have been from our other board members. It's very concerning, some of the things that have been brought to our attention, and we will definitely be looking into that. Social agendas and propaganda have no place in our schools. Moving on from that, I would like to thank our teachers, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers. Literally, it takes a village, from the people looking around the room, Stephanie, Mike, Todd, Jessica, Rhonda, everybody here has put a lot of effort and a lot of sweat and blood and tears in getting these kids to graduate this year. Just want to recognize you tonight. Thank you for everything that you do for us on a daily basis. This is part-time for us, but it's your life full-time, and we really appreciate that. I'll echo the comments about Emma. What a, just what an amazing young woman. I've been impressed since the day I met her, sitting up here and speaking. It's unreal. She's definitely going to be going places. I'm sure we're going to see her on television sometime or another. She's unbelievable. And the rest of the SAC, the conference that they put on, that was wonderful. It's always great to be able to speak to the students in those types of settings. Look forward to the graduations. Like Tim said, it is awesome to go up there and hear those names called, and for all the different colleges and the men and women who choose to serve our nation, it really makes you feel proud. That's about all I have, and we're looking forward to summer, and thank you everyone for being here. Meeting adjourned.